Great, I'd like to invite everyone to stand for the pledge of flag, please.
(inaudible)
Very good, welcome everyone to the February 17th meeting. Minutes of February 3rd, do we have a motion to approve the minutes of February 3rd?
Salute.
We have a motion?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Financial report and payment of the bills, we have a motion?
Salute.
We have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I have one question.
Very good.
Steve on the news journal, so 3358, I'm assuming that's for the RFQ or the...
Right, Simon? Might be for the, is it for... For market?
It'd be to the RFQ and it's likely going to be for advertising resolution R1 2018 or 2016, that'd be four times.
In the news journal?
That would be for the news journal.
Or the, we will notice this, Red Patient's, yeah, Red Patient's RFQ.
I had one quick question, I think Dan, you can probably answer this for me real quick. The box tapping and welding, what was that for, may I ask?
That's for water main break, we had a 279 and 545, ready to install valves for...
Okay.
They had to install valves so they could shut the water down, but without shutting off YMCA and Route 40, I mean, Route 40 and Route 7 properties, it isolated the water main.
Very good. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. Elton Alliance, your 2015 annual report, who is going to do the presentation?
Oh, it's me.
Mr. Roger Owens.
You gotta give a little bit of the screen.
Roger, if you could, I'm sure you've already got a plan, but I think you're gonna introduce all the members of the Alliance that are here.
Yes, Mayor, we are going to do that, it's actually part of my presentation.
Very good, and I won't say another word.
You'll be surprised at how organized I am, or you'll be surprised how unorganized I am. We'll give Jessica a second there.
(inaudible)
Just don't throw anything at us. Mayor and Commissioners, thank you, as you know, I'm Roger Owens, I want to thank you for allowing us to be here, and thank you in advance for listening to our presentation. Elton's a great town, I was born here, I'm happy to be involved with so many great people. Tonight, we're gonna have presentations from myself, also from our Vice Chairman and Chair of the Organization Committee Larry Kraus, we'll have a short presentation from Margie Blystone, who is our Arts and Entertainment District Chair and Design Committee Chair, we're gonna have a short presentation from Kathy Kunda on economic restructuring, and also Jessica Price, our Executive Assistant to the Elton Alliance, will have a presentation for us too. Now, we serve as the Main Street Manager, and we work together with local government and business community, and the business community to restore, promote, maintain our diverse historic downtown area, while attracting new enterprises for the benefit of the community, its residents, its businesses, and our visitors. Listened here is gonna be our Board of Directors, now, remember, all of our Board of Directors are volunteers, so complete volunteer Board of Directors, it's a very diverse group, it comes from many different business and government backgrounds. My name is Roger Owens, and I'm the Chairman of the Elton Alliance, and I have three businesses here in town, that would be the Rymark Financial Services, I also own and operate Oakling Laundry and Dry Cleaning, as well as Village Laundry and Dry Cleaning. We have Larry Kraus as our Vice Chairman, he is with Kraus Brothers Heating and Air Conditioning. Candy Davis, she's also here with us tonight, and our audience is retired from Elton Gas, that's our Treasurer. Cindy Fedroth, who is our Secretary, she's here with us tonight in the audience also. Also on our board, we have Rob Alt, Robert J. Alt, excuse me, the Mayor of Elton, he's obviously with us, Margie Blystone, Arts Entertainment Design Chairperson. Also on our Board of Directors, we have Linda Burris, who is the Senior Public Affairs Manager for Delmarva Power. We have Brad Carrillo, who's owner of Aspen Property Management. Donald Hicks, owner of Hicks Homes for Funerals. And the audience we have and who we're presenting is Kathy Kunda, who's President of the Boys and Girls Club of Cecil County, and she was formerly with BPAC. Rob Massimiano is owner of the Thai Water Tattoo Business. Sharon Pelham is the Business Development Director for the Aberdeen Improving Ground Federal Credit Union in Cecil County. Chrissy Ann Zep is one of our Directors, she's the Vice President of Institutional Advancement and Government Relations with Cecil College. In the audience with us tonight, we have Richard Zumel, Dr. Richard Zumel, who is President and CEO of Union Hospital, as well as Ray Waters, who's owner of Walt's Tavern, and Ray is with us also tonight. So that's our Board of Directors. Now, the Elton Alliance was formed in 1998 when Mayor Kraus was in office, and he urged a group of volunteers to be motivated and get moving to, their vision was to bring back old Elton. The Elton Alliance was very successful, and helped complete the $12 million Streetscape Program, as well as the Bridge Street Bridge renovations with the assistance of Senator Walter Baker. The Elton Alliance merged with the Elton Chamber of Commerce in the year 2000. In 2003, June, the town of Elton received its Maryland Main Street designation, and the Elton Chamber of Commerce and Alliance was asked to run that program for the town. In 2006, Elton received its Arts and Entertainment District designation, which is managed by the Elton Alliance for the town of Elton. So you may wonder what the Elton Alliance does, well, we have many, many, many tasks, and they include to manage the Arts and Entertainment District, and Ms. Blystone will have a short presentation on that shortly. And one of the things I'll point out about Margie, is Margie is one of two Arts and Entertainment Managers in Maryland that is a volunteer. All the other districts have paid positions there, so we have a great group of volunteers in putting forth time for our cause. We maintain the Elton Visitor Center, there's staff there to answer questions, direct people, and hand out tourism information, we hand out a lot of information. We also maintain and keep on file information from other state agencies and provide Elton's tourism information to other statewide visitor centers, and we are also a state visitor center. We manage the Maryland Main Street Program, and the duties of the Maryland Main Street Manager includes reporting to the Maryland Housing and Community Development Program. We follow the four-point approach, as outlined by the Main Street Program, and we're gonna have a little presentation on that shortly, some more details. The Manager attends quarterly meetings, attends legislative meetings, manages the facade program, applies for grants, communicates with merchants, and holds quarterly merchant meetings, where the merchants can voice their concerns, we can help with rental assistance, sale assistance, and promotional assistance. Now, Elton is one of only 28 Maryland Main Streets. Elton's Main Street Program is seen as a model program at the state level. And every time that Maryland has hosted the National Main Street Convention, Elton has been chosen as a destination to bring other national Main Street Programs to visit. These visitors include local Main Street Managers, Town Planners, and also Mayors. Elton has hosted over 80 visitors from Wyoming, Colorado, Montana, Idaho, and Wisconsin. Main Street America has been helping revitalize older and historic commercial districts for more than 35 years. Main Street America is a program of the nonprofit National Main Street Center, a subsidiary of the National Trust for Historic Preservation. Elton's Main Street is nationally accredited through the National Trust for Historic Preservation, which means that we follow all the regulations put forth by the Trust for Historic Preservation in the state, and we do reporting. The Main Street Approach consists of three tightly integrated components, community vision and market understanding, which are the inputs, transformation strategy, implementing the four-point approach as I mentioned earlier, and then impact and measurement, the outcomes, which is for us, our monthly yearly reporting to the Main Street Program. Our vision is enhancing an arts and entertainment district, strengthening retail and restaurants, increase business and community participation, and also increase housing for the professional workforce. At this point, I'm gonna introduce Ms. Kathy Kunda, who's Chair of our Economic Vitality Committee, and she's gonna make a short presentation.
Thank you, Roger, thank you, Mayor and Commissioners, for having us here tonight. Thank you for incorporating a full-time executive to the Elton Alliance in the United States, it's definitely a treasure for our town. First of all, Economic Vitality, we have been renamed under the Main Street Program, we used to be Restructuring Economic Development, and now we are called Economic Vitality, I guess they thought the name gives us a little more energy to move in quicker than we already are. Under the revitalization, the definition is the revitalization of downtown or neighborhood commercial district requires focusing on the underlying economic vitality of the district. This work is rooted in a commitment to making the most of the community's unique sense of place and existing historic assets, which we have many here. Harnessing local economic opportunity and creating a supportive business environment for small business owners, as well as the growing scores of entrepreneurs, innovators, and localists alike. With the nationwide growing interest in living downtown, supporting downtown housing is also a key element of rebuilding economic vitality. The Elton Alliance was designated, as Roger had mentioned, the Arts and Entertainment in 2006, as part of our economic plan. We are now in the process of redesignating the town of Elton to continue the growth of the district. The facade program has also been a great benefit to our town, over the years, we have afforded, we have been, we have received $400,000, and that $400,000, because it is a matching fund, has generated over $2 million opportunities here in the downtown area. Currently, we have approximately $76,000 left in the facade grant that we have yet to distribute. We are currently working on two $50,000 grants from the state. The first $50,000 in projects has already been approved by the state, the work has been done, and the owners have been paid. We are now working on the second $50,000, we have submitted two projects for approval to the state in an amount of $27,000.50. We continue to follow the master plan, it's still viable, we will, as a committee, be looking at it, we have some new members, and we'll be looking at that, most, a lot of the work has been done, and we'll see if there's anything that we need to readjust because of all these state regulations and federal regulations that have come down on us. Our economic partners, there's no way that we can possibly do this alone, so we need to partner with the town. Chip Rummel and Jeannie Minner are excellent resources for us, they're always there with the answers. Our Cecil Business Resource Partners, the Cecil College, you need an educated workforce, so with our school system, as well as the college, we hope to have an educated workforce for the businesses that will be moving in. Economic Development, Susan O'Neil, Jason Zhang, R2, phone call, wait for us. Small Business Development Center, they help with the numerous educational programs, whether we have to close a business and get the workers reeducated, and starting any business plan, if there's entrepreneurs that are ready to go forward. The Cecil Library is a great resource as well, for helping our small businesses get their plan in place and ready to take to the bank. Our local Realtors, and our project managers are all great partners. The local banks assist with small business administration loans, and the Department of Housing and Community Development assist in the Neighborhood Business Scores Loan Program. Some of our new businesses that have come in, Sue's Quilt Studio, Sue Whitaker is also on our Economic Vitality Committee. Sweets and Treats Bakery, which I know that people come from all over the county to go there. Best Vacations is moving in, we're really excited about having Kathy Clarkson join us. The Main Street Pizzas and Steaks Downtown, the Elton Ford, the renovations, and that is just a beautiful sight, just going by and seeing all their products. Simply savory, great catering, they also are connected too with the Coffee Place, where you can get their wonderful food there at the Coffee Place. The Stop and Go Grocery, which is in the deli that has moved into the Old Dance Station, and the Gallery at 122 East Main. These are our businesses that have been assisted by the Alliance, and are planning to be assisted in the future. And now, it is my pleasure to introduce to the Chair of the Design Committee and Arts Entertainment, the gala keeps everything beautiful downtown, Margie Blystone.
It'll be a regular feature here, so. Allow me to reintroduce myself, I'm Margie Blystone, and I'm the Chairman of Elton's Design Committee, and Chair of the Arts and Entertainment District. I recently submitted an entry to the Main Street Small Business Revolution Online Essay Competition. My essay helped me to express why I enjoy volunteering in Elton, so I've included a copy of that in the handouts that you received tonight, I believe you got that in there right, okay, in order to share those reasons with you. I love what I do, and here's an account of the tax I manage and take part in. A focus on design supports a community's transformation by enhancing the physical elements of downtown, while capitalizing on the unique assets that set the commercial district apart. Main Streets enhance their appeal to residents and visitors alike with attention to public space through the creation of pedestrian-friendly streets, inclusion of public art in unexpected areas, visual merchandising, adaptive reuse of older and historic buildings, more efficiently designed buildings, transit-oriented development, and much more. That's a real fancy way of saying, this is some of the things I do. As Design Committee Chairman, the objective is to enhance the downtown area in order to encourage economic development and help support local business. My daughter Sarah and I, maybe you've seen us around, we work towards this goal by decorating windows throughout the downtown area. We found this to be a wonderful method for bringing attention to available storefronts, and also a means of creating a charming enhancement for visitors downtown. To further the objective of downtown design, I'm part of the facade grant committee, which Kathy had just mentioned. It's exciting to see the creative energy on Main Street, as is evident in the brightly colored windows, frames, and shutters. Not long ago, I presented the growth we've experienced over the last 10 years in Elton's Arts and Entertainment District for the purpose of our redesignation of the district. Some of the projects we've managed which have contributed to this growth include utilizing grant money to purchase the Elton Art Loop banners, to identify businesses engaged in art and/or entertainment-related activities. I've collaborated with Jessica Price to create rack cards in which to advertise the Elton Art Loop, garnered a sponsor for the rack cards, and delivered them to hotels and BMEs throughout the country, county, and nearby Delaware. And those were, that sponsorship came from the Cecil Garden, so, thank you to Bill Price for that. I also manage social media, websites, and the press as a means of promoting the district and the activities that are going on. I travel to quarterly meetings throughout the eastern shore to network with members of the TAD Group, which is Tourism, Arts, and Downtown Development. Today, I was actually in an analyst for Maryland Arts Day, and we were talking with delegates and telling them we appreciate the money they're putting towards the arts, and encouraging them to support us even more, so that was really exciting. I also traveled to various destinations throughout Maryland to attend the annual AME District Conferences. Last year, the conference took place in Hagerstown, Maryland, fortunately, our hotel room was subsidized by the Maryland State Arts Agency, so that was good. I also coordinate meetings with the Art Loop members, and visit the various venues during First Fridays and throughout the month, offering support where needed. I manage the monthly reports to track growth in preparation for the extended annual report that I file for the Maryland State Arts Council. The projects we're currently working on is managing volunteers for the Elton Ambassador Program, who will provide a friendly welcome and information on parking and events taking place within the district during First Fridays and other special events. I'll model this afterward, I'm done. The Elton Ambassadors will be easily identified by the bright aqua vests that they'll be wearing, so we're kind of waiting for the weather to get a little better, because we don't want to like turn our volunteers off right away if they're standing out in 20 degree weather, so. I'm also working with the committee on the Downtown Elton Festival of the Arts, which is going to take place on Saturday, May 21st, 2016. And when the weather improves, my daughter and I, and whatever committee members we can pull together, will be working on the Elk at the Corner of Bridge and Main Street to mimic the design of the Elton Art Loop banners. I'd like to also note that one of our Board Members, Rob Massimiano, did a beautiful job of repairing and repainting one of the Elton Els on Route 40 in front of the Elton Diet. All righty, I'm gonna turn it over to our Executive Assistant, Jessica Price now.
Model for the bathroom, yeah. It says volunteer. I'm gonna attempt to do double duty as a talk. I'm gonna present on the promotion aspect of the four-point approach. Promoting Main Street takes many forms, but the ultimate goal is to position the downtown or commercial district as the center of the community and the hub of economic activity, while creating a positive image that showcases a community's unique characteristics. This can be done through highlighting cultural traditions, celebrating and preserving important architecture and history, encouraging local businesses to market cooperatively, offering coordinated specials and sales, and hosting special events aimed at changing perceptions of the district, and communicating to residents, investors, businesses, and property owners that this place is special. Our Promotion Committee is currently made up of members of the Elton Alliance, Board of Directors, and numerous volunteers throughout the county. Ages reach from middle school on up, and we are very fortunate to have volunteers who believe in Elton and want to make it the best it can be. Co-op marketing, an advantage of the Elton Chamber Alliance is that we are a non-for-profit, which basically gives us a better rate on advertising than normal businesses, so we are able to negotiate lower advertising prices to allow small businesses who may not normally be able to afford advertising to sort of get their foot in the door. A small example of this was our Cash for Christmas promotion, where we were able to mention all the participating merchants, but a better example, which is actually in the packet as well, would be the group advertising that we were able to do with The Guardian. This basically came out, it started in April, and went all the way through December, and it changed monthly, and basically, the businesses were able to get cheaper ad space in a local paper that they may not normally be able to afford. With Small Business Saturday, it's been growing in Elton, in the beginning, I believe only the Page was known to participate, now almost all of our retail businesses are participating. Being a Chamber of Commerce, we're able to order the large packets for all of our businesses to distribute, which includes posters, buttons, free tote bags, bandanas, pennants, buttons, all to get the word out, to get people to shop on tomorrow this Saturday, right after Black Friday. The Elton Chamber and Alliance has been promoting ribbon cuttings of new businesses, both downtown and surrounding Elton. They're a good way to get word out about new businesses, invite the public and local dignitaries, and also a great way to get free press for new businesses as well. The town of Elton's Main Street Program is part of the state's Maryland Department of Housing and Community Development. The Main Street Coordinator for the state is Amy Sykes, and Miss Sykes and her staff are there for support with economic planning, marketing, promotion, and training and education. Because Elton is a model Main Street for the state, and so successful in implementing their programs, our Main Street is usually selected to give tours, host meetings, and testify on behalf of the Main Street Program at legislative hearings. Having a great working relationship with the state also means being more likely to receive grants for our Main Street. Special events, our promotional committee is very active, we have roughly 39 events, with 33 being outdoor events, everything from banquets to car shows, festivals, 5Ks, and Christmas events. I'm just gonna cycle through some of these as I go. The number of gatherings we hold are very impressive, and help to lure businesses downtown. On more than one occasion, we have had businesses want to relocate to Main Street, because they know that we have numerous events that bring people downtown. The goal of the Promotion Committee is to bring people downtown. It is the job of the merchants, then, to try to get those people into the business. I like to think of it kind of like a car dealership, you would have a sale promotion that would want to bring people there, but it's sort of up to the salesman to seal that deal and have them come in. A large portion of the grant money funded to the Alliance is used, or is going to be used, for the increase of promotion and marketing, especially the advertising budget and marketing for the town.
Take a drink, Jess.
I know, thank you. Why are events so important? Recently, Sandy Turner had given us some facts and figures on events for the state. An average Maryland household, if there were no events in the state of Maryland, would have to pay an additional $1,000 in additional taxes to make up for that revenue that is generated by events in the state. For Cecil County itself, for 2014, they generated $161 million just in tours and sales. To kind of put that in perspective, the labor income only generated $91 million. At this time, I would like to introduce Mr. Larry Kraus, he is the Vice President of the Elton Chamber and Alliance, and he is also the Chair of our Organization Committee.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, fellow Commissioners. I am Larry Kraus, I have been in this town for 30 years now, Kraus Brothers Heating and Air Conditioning, and I also have various properties up and down North Street, as well as Main Street. Where are we? Organization, we'll talk real quick about that. A strong organization foundation is the key to a sustainable, sustainable Main Street revitalization effort. This can take many forms, from a standalone nonprofit organization, to a special assessment district, to a program housed in a municipality or existing community development entity. Regardless of the organizational type, the focus is on ensuring that all organization resources, partners, funding, volunteers, et cetera, are mobilized to effectively implement the community transformative strategies. The Elton Organization, the Elton Alliance acts as the Main Street Managers for the town of Elton. This enables our organization to apply for grants for downtown, receive services, and attend informative meetings from the state of Maryland. All Main Street communities can receive additional grants from the state. Let's talk a quick second here about the volunteer hours. Recruiting volunteers is another necessary part of our organization task. In 2015, we have logged 1,267 hours, volunteer hours. The national value of a volunteer time is $24.07 per hour. That estimate helps acknowledge the millions of individuals who dedicate their time, talents, and energy in making a difference. The Elton Alliance is very fortunate to have contributed $30,496.69 worth of labor by using volunteers for several committees, events, designs, and overall good for the town. The funding resource, Elton Chamber Alliance has received $10,000 this year in dues, over 75 members of the community profit, we profit from the events, we grant, facade, Comcast, Cecil County Arts Council, Town Development. For some reason, I have the very shortest speech of the entire night, and I want to thank everybody. I'd like to turn this back over to Mr. Roger Owens to give the final presentation. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Kraus. Okay, Mayor and Commissioners, I think I can finish up with the next 45 minutes or so. Come on, you knew I had a tele joke here someplace. I just want to thank everybody on the town, the town board, the town employees, the public works, everybody in the town has been great in helping us do what we do. At this point, it concludes tonight's presentation. If you have any questions or comments, please let us know, and watch your email, because we do send you an invitation every month to attend our monthly board meeting, which is happening the first Tuesday. monthly board meeting, which is held on the first Tuesday of every month at 8:00 a.m. I look forward to seeing you there. Thanks again.
Very good. Roger, I got a quick question. Can any member of the public attend the meetings? And I should probably know this as a... And I want to clarify that the position of the mayor has always been a position for the town to be on that board, but are you welcome? Do you welcome the public to the meetings?
Yes, we don't normally have too many people show up, but absolutely. We do have some of the commissioners show up sometimes, but if anybody wants to come and make a presentation to us, if they want us to come in and ask questions, we can certainly put them on the agenda. Welcome, come and listen, see what we do. Our board meetings are probably, to some people, more in-depth than you think. We do cover a lot of areas and a lot of the things that are going on at the time and eventually going on way into the future, because we do plan this and our Executive Director and her assistant do a good job of organizing those things. But yeah, anybody can come in, and anybody's welcome to reach out to us and ask questions.
Very good. Anyone from the board have any questions?
A couple. Your answer to one of my questions on here was if the volunteers were not a part of this move with the Elton Alliance, what would the operating cost be? You showed that, I'm glad you pointed that out.
It would be impossible for us to do some of the events. I mean, you look at the Fall Fest or the Halloween Parade, we drag so many people in to help us, that we literally couldn't do it by ourselves. And the volunteers are a key part of this organization, including, like I mentioned earlier, all the Board of Directors are volunteers. Many of them don't live in the downtown area or in Elton at all, but they do care about what goes on in Elton, and they do care about the town and want to make things better, and that's why we're all here.
The other question I had was, when I first hear Elton Alliance being involved with downtown, and how can we connect the dots? And when I say connect the dots, I know that Walt back here that's on your ward now, I know he's going to connect this somehow. But anyway, with Elton Alliance being a part of downtown expanding around the town, that's what I would like to see, that Elton Alliance be more focused on broadening the outcome for the town of Elton, not just the downtown. I know you have to start somewhere, but what's in the future for that?
Well, I appreciate your concern here. One of the things that you heard in this presentation tonight was about the grants that were available. A lot of those are only available for downtown. The Main Street program unfortunately is not going to give us money for Bridge Street or Route 40 or Blue Bowl Avenue or in other areas like that. So we're taking that grant money that's available and doing what we can there. But we also encourage and try to help people that are downtown. For example, you see the grand opening for the Elton Ford. We were involved with that from the beginning. We didn't show all the grand openings we did, and we didn't show other businesses that we weren't intimately involved in. But we've had many, many grand openings, ribbon cuttings out on Bridge Street, Route 40, the shopping center where Chili's is, Walt's Tavern was another one. So we've been involved with a lot of different areas, and we would encourage and hope that more businesses in those areas would also join the Elton Alliance. If you look at our membership list, you'll see that a lot of the businesses that are members aren't located downtown. None of my businesses are downtown, but there's a lot of them that are, and we encourage participation from these businesses, and I would be absolutely happy to expand that. If you have, any of you have any business that you'd like to talk to, our sales guy is Mr. Larry Kraus, and he will go out and meet with him personally, drop off brochures and tell him about the benefits. And he has, yes.
My last question, now I know what you're going to say, so I'm going to ask it anyway. How can the Town of Elton be more involved to helping the Elton Alliance grow? And I know what you're going to say, but what would be your wish for the town as of right now? I know we've increased the funding, but what would your wish be for the Town of Elton to do?
Well, this is kind of hard to say. We don't actually need to ask for any more money. What I think the Town is shocked.
I just wanted to ask that question.
You know, I've been involved with this organization and the Elton Chamber of Commerce. I don't know when. I was President of the Chamber of Commerce back in the 90s before the Elton Alliance came along. And many of you have heard me tell these stories. I can remember in the early days of the Halloween Parade, and I said, "Where do I get money from?" The lady who recruited me said, "Call this list of businesses and ask them for $10." So I don't have time for this. Where do I get volunteers from? Well, call your friends. Oh, okay. Then I got to the day of the parade, and me and a woman who was a few years older than me went down to Meadow Park and picked up picnic tables and stuck them in the back of my truck and carried them up for the Halloween Parade. We didn't have any support, maybe we didn't know to ask, but the Town didn't give us any support. Later on, when Mayor Walt came along for the first time, suddenly, we got support. And don't repeat this, but at one point, he even gave me a key to the Town Hall Building to get the tables out for ourselves. And so what I'm saying is the Town has done a tremendous job since that time where we do get help. The Public Works people and the Police Department do a phenomenal job shutting the streets down for the Halloween Parade, putting up the barricades, supplying us with trash cans, lights for the Fall Festival, generators occasionally if we've needed it. The Town's done a great job, and I'd like to see that support continue. I think that the attitude of the Public Works people, Dan's people, the workers that come out and help us, everybody, Lou, has done a great job of really changing things from where they were years and years ago.
Thank you.
Commissioner?
Mr. Rhodes, how are you?
Wonderful.
Impressive.
Thank you.
A lot of information that's going to take me a little while to read through. I've talked to you before, I've talked to Mr. Kraus before, and to other people, and I definitely want this to continue. I have a couple of questions as far as the Elton Ambassador Program. Is that strictly for businesses or new residents also?
That is for the community.
So new residents also?
Yes, anyone, and anyone, we would love to get volunteers for it, anybody who's looking to get involved downtown, and I can highly attest to what a wonderful, how great that's been for our family to be involved in the events downtown and what's going on. But yeah, it's really going to be for benefits to people coming to the town, finding out where to park, finding out what's going on. The ambassadors will be schooled on what it is that's happening at night, so they'll be able to, you know, move people on, tell people where to go. Have you seen the college? Let me tell you how to get there. There's parking here, there's parking there. That's what the Ambassador Program is going to do.
Thank you. I've been looking into a couple of things, and I'm familiar with microeconomies and macroeconomies. And what we have here, in my opinion, downtown is a microeconomy. And I definitely want, like I said, I want it to keep on growing. Has the Alliance taken a look at the funding that it gets from the Town and figured out at what point that the Town's funding wouldn't be useful? That they're getting enough from the buildings that are now rented downtown to sustain itself? What would you need for that to happen is what I'm looking at.
I think we would need a lot more members. As Mr. Kraus said earlier, we had about $10,000 of dues come in last year for membership. It'd be really nice if we could just charge everybody $500 and have them join the Elton Alliance, but we know that many businesses wouldn't join if the level was that high. So obviously, we do have some businesses that pay that much based on the size of the business or number of employees. We've expanded the arts and entertainment industry. That will be expanded out to Landing Lane.
No, we're not going for the expansion now.
Oh, we're not going for the expansion, okay. But we've done other, in the past, expansions for certain areas to try to drag in more businesses and let them know that they're welcome here. In the future, I'm not quite sure that we're going to be self-sufficient without the Town's money, and we really do appreciate that, because having a full-time Main Street Manager and Executive Director has helped us tremendously. And last year, when we were here, one of the things that we pointed out was that in many, many other towns of this size, the local municipality contributes substantially more than what the Elton is giving. But we're okay with what you have, helping us with. We're not here begging for more money or anything, and we're going to take what you give us and do the best we can with it and make things better. And then each year, come back and tell you how things have improved or how things are getting better. There's a number of projects going on right now in various areas that we're working on that haven't popped yet, but they're about to. And I think you're going to be surprised at some of the action that we see in the next six months to a year, and it's all projects that we've been working on, and we've had our hand in a lot of things, really a lot of things. Some of them there aren't going to be public yet because the people involved just don't want to tell anybody. We're working on things in the background. And not all that costs money. It's just a matter of having our people there and us taking our time and going to meetings, and meeting with bankers, and meeting with Chip, and meeting with people like that to make sure that we're helping those businesses along or helping those businesses start. We have some startups coming.
Very good. Thank you, Elton Alliance, but I would like, Steve, I'd like for you to come up, because this will probably, this will be an event that will have to be brought through the Alliance. But I think it's very important for you to, you know, I didn't put you on the agenda, but I had to, you know, and I know we have to have you on the agenda. So would you come on up for me?
Thank you, everyone.
Take Roger's seat.
I didn't do that. Thanks, Jess.
Steve, introduce yourself and tell them where you work and what your thinking is.
My name is Steve Fangman. I work for Premier Auto and Tire, and I'm here because these are amazing events that you guys have. That's a lot. It's a lot more than I even knew about, which is amazing. And I work on things in Newark as well, because we have a place there. I just want to say one thing about that. I was just at a meeting in Newark the other night, and there was two visitors. This is amazing. Hats off to you guys. That's awesome. So Premier wants to dive in feet first and help raise money for the community, and we want to add an event to their already impressive list. And what we want to do, facilitated by Premier on behalf of Elton Alliance and to benefit the new cancer length of hospital, we want to run a mini Grand Prix race downtown Elton. We want to close off, if you click, if you look at the second page, you'll see the route we want to do it on. We want to close off Elton Streets and put 30 adult-sized mini Grand Prix race cars on the street that have a top speed of 40 miles an hour, and set them off in front of Premier Tire and Auto up Main Street to Delaware Avenue, turn right, go down into the park, do a lap around the park, come out, come down to Howard Street, take a right on Bow and back up Main. It's about a six-minute lap. It's 2.2 miles. We want to do five laps. We want, we're going to have four races. So the entire event should last about four hours, but it turns out that the same day we're doing that, that the hospital is having the cancer walk in the morning, which is a good thing. Because I think it's going to be a similar route, if not the same. We're going to be working on the hospital on that weekend. And so we're going to have all the people down there from the morning, stick it around for the afternoon. We're going to have a focal point of being at the park with all kinds of vendors and whatnot out there. And it's, on the next, on the second, third page, you'll see a picture of a race car. Again, I have slides, guys, I'm not showing a race car, but the race car is like this. I can see Earl Pine's face on that first front pocket right there, just, you know...
A leg with him.
Are they adult-sized or Earl-sized?
Earl-sized. Yeah, they're adult-sized. Yes.
Literal face picture, right?
The, just, yeah. Then the next page, you see a couple of, there's pictures of races that we've done before that are going on throughout the country. I ran this race for five years in Delaware for the Authoritis Foundation in the 90s, and it was an amazing event and raised a lot of money for the Authoritis Foundation. The only reason we stopped is because the insurance companies didn't want to write for insurance. Before I even came here, they've already secured the insurance. So that's all taken care of. You can get the insurance. The way it works is the night before the race, we go hopefully to the hospital park, to the hospital garage, and we have a 100-foot track there, and we get the team, which are five-person teams, and each of the sponsored cars. And the five-person team, the driver gets in, the other team pushes the car to 50 feet, the driver gets out, they change a tire, and the new driver gets in. So, and then they push the other 50 feet. And that's how we decide who's going to go first in each of the races, okay?
How many cars are racing at each time?
We're going to have 30 cars. We're going to have 15 racing at a time.
15 cars at a time?
15 at a time. So we'll have the first heat of 15, second heat of 15. Out of those two races, we'll take the top seven of each and put them in the signature race at the end. The other cars will go into a consolation race, we'll be the third race. But the cars the night before, once they qualify, then, then, we make sure they didn't tweak the engines. These cars are quarantined, they can change tires, they can change brakes, they can change sprockets, they can put a bigger gas tank on, they can do all that stuff, they can put suspension on the darn things, they can do any one, but they cannot tweak the engines. If they tweak the engines, we're going to have professionals checking it out, not the folks associated with Premier Tire and Auto. And we're going to check them out. And then, and if anybody does tinker with them, they'll have one chance to fix it or they're disqualified, okay? After the races are over, we're going to get them again, and we're going to check them again. And if they tweak, they're disqualified, and you know, the winner's up. So we'll have a, Friday night, we'll have prizes for the fastest teams, the best decorated car, the most team spirit, just all kinds of different things. We'll have the Mayor's Choice Car, we could have the Police Team's Choice Car, just arbitrary stuff, it doesn't have to, just, I like that car, and they win. So...
How do you make money?
How do we make money? We make money by sponsorship. Go back, if you keep going back to the revenue page, each car, they have to buy the exact same car. We'll provide them with the contact and the model number and get that taken care of. We negotiated a lower price as well. But then, in addition to the purchase of their car, it's $500 per car. 30 cars that are going to be in it, we've already got eight people committed, okay?
So they're buying their cars?
They're buying their cars, and they're paying $500 to enter that car into the race. Now, once they have their car, because this is going to be an ongoing thing, then every year it's $500. 30 cars, that's 15 grand. We have 12 turns on the race. You can sponsor a turn, you can put up your business, you can put up political, whatever you want to put up, you can sponsor a turn. Turns are $250 apiece, so that's another three grand. Vendor booths, we project them to bring in another $15,000. So pedestrian crossings sponsor, because we're going to have pedestrian crossings, because you have to have places people can get across and whatnot. And if I was going to be, if I was a business, I'd certainly want just pedestrians crossing in front of my business, and I would pay for that. So we're going to get that sponsored. So that's about $500 there. So the, and there's a lot more things that can be sponsored. This is by no means totally complete, I apologize for that. And then the expenses are there as well. So, and then there's some unknown things that I don't know about. I don't know what the police would cost for the public safety. I don't know what it would cost to remove the speed bumps temporarily. We're thinking about taking the speed bumps out, because if we're going down Howard Street at 40 miles an hour, those cars are going to be flying, and we don't want anybody to get hurt. We don't want anybody hurt. Now, we'll put them back, and so if there's a cost to that, then we'll absorb that as well, and maybe we'll get a speed bump for global sponsor. Who knows? We'll sell anything to get revenue for this hospital. So we know there's some unknowns. All I can tell you is this thing's a lot of fun. Nobody ever got, I'm not going to say nobody got hurt in Delaware in five years we did. Nobody left in an ambulance, nobody broke anything. There's some bumps and bruises. You know, people are running into hay bales, people are, you know, it's a little bit, it's just so much fun, so much fun, and it brings in a lot of people in this town. There's parking, parking things have to be worked out. The courthouse was recommended, and that would be a great place to park. And also, as far as down by the park, you can park across the street from the park and go to a controlled entry point there as well, because the pedestrians would have to cross, you know, the race track at some points. But parks where they're not allowed to cross will be barricaded somehow, or it's so fence that they could be used for construction or whatever. It'll all be taken care of there. So I'm here to ask, please, would you let us through?
Well, I think, when you and I spoke, I think if we need to hit the recommendation from the Police Department, Public Works, and see if it's something that we can pull off with those obstacles, and then we'll bring it back in front of us once those items are all nailed down. But I can tell you, concept, I'm excited about it. I can tell you, what a great way to raise 25, $30,000 for cancer.
Right, and it takes us outside of Main Street as well, which is kind of ties into what you guys are talking about here, too, moving a little bit off the main... Moving a little bit off the Main Street to do that. So all in favor? Oh, I can do that, but I can't.
Very good. Any questions for Steve until we get some recommendations back?
I would like to say, if you don't mind, we did contact Larry Walter at the Police Department, and because of the, he was busy the past couple days with the police officers in Harford County. So we are setting up a time as soon as possible to meet with them, to see if it is all possible.
If we can pull it together, I'm in.
Great. Awesome. What's the next move?
I'd say our next move is get recommendations, to see if we can, what the speed bumps on Howard's going to cost us to do, if we can do it, see if it's possible to make that route work. And then I'd say we should have that information to bring it back to the board, and we'll make a vote on it.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
Thanks.
Okay. Ms. Jean Minter, come on down. Go ahead, Ms. Jean.
So I'm here to present the 2015 annual report for the Planning and Government Department. The latest article in the Amended Code of Maryland requires that the Planning Commission prepare, adopt, and file an annual report with local legislative bodies. So this has been prepared by my department, and should satisfy that requirement. They're required every year. I've provided that here. And what it does is it covers the development activity that's occurred in the town during previous calendar year. It includes major, minor subdivisions, resentings, annexations, special exceptions, variances, appeals, historic district work permits, historic district designations, billing permits, and site plans. It's presented in a summary fashion, and in the document, you'll see applications have been processed, the number of applications, the description of each of the boards, the members of the board, each of the boards that I mentioned, Planning Commission Board of Appeals, et cetera. And then we break it down by the different applications, and we describe the different development applications, so from the county, commercial, residential, where they were located, and the status of their applications. That's a very quick summary. Are there any questions?
Any questions for Jean?
I'll send it on to the state, and if they don't have any problem, they can put it on our website.
Very good. Thank you. We don't have to vote on that, do we?
You have, or it doesn't have to be on trial. I'm not sure what they mean by that, so.
I think they should vote to accept the report. But we have a motion to accept the 2015 annual report as presented.
So...
A second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Here we go.
Steve.
And you'll have this posted. Okay, very good. Lou, you're on. You've got two requests.
Yes, I have. Elton Alliance requests a alcohol waiver for March 31, 2016. Citizen of the Year banquet, I recommend that the board grant that waiver.
Do we have a motion?
So...
In a second. Any discussion on the Citizen of the Year? All in favor?
Aye.
Abstain?
I will abstain.
Thank you. Next item.
People going to be recognized here.
Yeah.
Next item, Lou?
Next item is downtown car show. There's a waiver requested for April 28, May 26, June 23, July 28, and August 25. This is for the North Street and High Street area and Main Street, Close Street, Fort House Lane, where the car shows being held. I would recommend that the waiver be granted.
Do we have a motion to approve the waiver?
So...
A second?
I have a question for a second.
I'll second. Any discussion?
Yes. The waiver is to, is for what exactly? To carry the alcohol outside, to serve outside?
Yeah. To have the alcohol in the public is illegal in town, unless there's a waiver granted for special events, by the Mayor and Commissioner.
And this would be open to any other, like Hurricane Grills that wants to come downtown and rent a booth and serve alcohol also? It would be open to them, correct?
No, I don't think so.
No, it's for our downtown, right, for the downtown merchants. If North Street or the mini hang that they were in there having a drink and brought it outside, they're able to do that, and they also can serve outside if they wish to.
What, going along with what DJ has to say, what would it prevent if hurricanes or Waltz had used their catering license and came down with a, with a truck? I don't know if that would be feasible or possible.
They'd have a waiver also.
So this waiver is for the...
Elton Alliance.
Okay. So this is an Elton Alliance waiver for the alcohol, and they have to put it in a container. It's in a red cup, or the cuff that says it can't carry the beer outside. I've never seen anyone carrying actual beer out there, other than putting it in a cup. Any other discussion?
So if Waltz Tavern wants to come down, they have to come to the board and ask for a waiver now? Is that what I'm hearing properly?
If it's special events recognized by the Mayor and Commissioner, they could do that.
All right.
May I have a second to speak?
No, no. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Post?
A post. I, I'm not opposed. I abstain. I'm sorry.
It just, it's... I'd like to say one more thing on that.
Yep.
You mind? I wanted to get out somehow that any establishment that wants to come down and come in front of the board to ask for a waiver, I think that they should have every opportunity to do so, and we need to make sure that everybody's aware that they have that opportunity.
I'd agree with that. I think that if hurricanes or any venue wanted to have a venue outside their facility, I'm 100% for that. I'd love for them to expand, expand that side of it. So if hurricanes wanted to have a little bit more outside with that, I'm 100% for that. I just think in this situation, I think your liquor license won't allow, my belief is, I don't think the liquor license would allow any other venues to come down and bring it without it being, or not, within, with so many feet of their storefront. Now, I may be wrong with that, but that's what I believe. But hurricanes could do one, jokers could do one, and certainly Waltz Tavern could expand it.
So if it fits into the liquor license and the catering license, if you have it as far as downtown, then we can accept that?
I would accept it, absolutely. Okay. Okay, you're the first one on. I know you have to sneak out. Sorry. You were on.
I have, one thing I want to discuss is, and I know the mayor's aware of it, and I want to make the entire board aware of it. Over the last week and a half, I had talked to Steve, and then a few more people come in about the Waterville. The last person that I saw recently, the Waterville due date was, it was December 31, and they got it February 1st, or the postmarking was February 1st. So there's a couple of things that come into play there that I want the board to be aware of, and I'd like to make a couple suggestions. First of all, if you're doing, it's a three-month cycle, so if they go out a month later, it becomes a four-month. And if they're over the 9,000 gallons minimum, then it puts them into a different rate bracket. Also, for any businesses out there that this is happening to, if it's 30,000 gallons on a minimum, then it throws them into another rate bracket. So I did talk to Steve about this, and what Steve said, if anybody brings it to the town, it definitely would make the adjustment. My problem with that is some people are just not willing to say anything at all, or don't have the wherewithal to do so. But we did, on the side of the bill, we made space to make any type of announcements or anything like that. And I think that with the board's, the entire board's permission, I think that we need to put something on here that, you know, things happen in life, and with any business, and that we need to, if there's any problem with your bill, you want to discuss your bill, please call. Now, I know it's an extra workload, and I know that some of you just got back from work, but we serve the town, and we'll make every adjustment necessary. I just think that would be proactive instead of reactive to the problems that are going on.
How come I'm agreeing with you so much?
I don't know.
I agree with that 100%.
Thank you. Waterbills, RFQ with the senior center, I did see, Steve, if, I saw that the constant yield, I saw that come out today, and we kind of all expected that.
Set me.
Could you, well, I know that you were hoping, four years ago, you were like, it's going up. Could you please put that in the layman's terms for myself, and maybe the rest of the board can figure that out? But I want to see what the deficit is between what we have as, as far as the constant yield and what it is right now.
I can insert if you want me to.
Absolutely.
Okay, the, what Commissioner Van Riden is asking or mentioning, the assessments overall for the town of Elton collectively went down. The, probably the commercial, we haven't had a breakdown of exactly what, one side or the other, but the bottom line is, we're going to collect $18,000 less in this upcoming fiscal than we collected last year. It's about $18,000. Now, if you look at the budget that we presented last year, and I think it was at $4 million, I don't have that number here in front of me, I should have brought it with me. What we actually budgeted, we budgeted less than we actually got last year, and when you see this, this constant yield number, they're projecting that we'll actually be getting more than what we projected last fiscal. But $18,000 was the actual number.
Fair enough.
That's all I have to do on it?
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And Steve, I think we're good. Here you go, you're on. I'll go last tonight.
Okay. I don't know who's going to, I wanted, for everyone that was here at our last meeting, we had a young woman get up and told us about a project she was doing, and it was very, very impressive. And she's sitting in front seat here, Ally Cole, and she just, her team that did this project, and I would love you to be able to tell about, Ally, just came in the top four in the country at Elton Christian School. I need to tell you who's, one of the teams is, what's the name of the place?
Moldova.
Moldova. I don't know where it's at, or, but it's quite impressive what they did. Ally, do you mind just?
I have my notes, because I'll forget. So as mayor, mayor. Commissioner, Mary Jo, sorry.
Ally, you can sit right over next to her. And you can have a microphone.
All righty. So as Commissioner Jablonski said, I did at the last meeting, kind of just give the mayor and commissioners a little bit of insight on a project that three of my high school friends and I had worked on for business class. We had to come up with a social impact project. So for lack of a better words, we had to find a problem and a solution, but it couldn't be for profit. So we came up with a nonprofit organization called Fostering Further, which basically takes teens who have aged out of the foster care system. We kind of take them in, we keep them, like, in education, keep them in school. We find job placement for them. We work with local hotels, motels, and apartment complexes, where they would give us their open rooms and empty rooms, where we would house these teens, and in return, they would get a tax write-off at the end of the year from us. And we're funded completely by donations and fundraisers. So as she explained to you, we did make top four out of the nation, and we're competing with eight teams from the United States and two from, one is from Moldova and the other one is from Spain. So on April 14, my team and I will be going to the University of Delaware with the Diamond State Challenge and competing against these three other teams in hopes that we will, of course, win and be able to make this project happen. This is one, I think, of the most important things that teenage, as teenagers, we found, and it kind of really gave us a big insight. On the right side is what a basic estate would provide for teens once they age out of the foster care system, and then on the left side is what we provide. So it's a little bit of just kind of working off the state, because the state does do some to help out, but it's not enough at all. And if you were here last week, you would have heard some of the statistics that I gave, and one of the biggest one was 25% of the children that age out in the foster care system will end up in jail. And so we kind of want to make a difference in that. So I encourage you to check out our website, which is fosteringfurtherweebly.com, and it gives you information just about each one of us high schoolers, what we're looking to do, and how we're trying to help out our community as best as we can. So I thank the mayor and commissioners for their support over the last couple weeks, and everyone who has been able to help us, and kind of just wish us luck on April 14, because it's going to be a very nerve-wracking day to be able to present. But lastly, we were nominated by, what the nomination came from Governor Jack Markell at, at Delaware, from Delaware. He nominated my group for the Jefferson Award for Global Changers, which is a global award that's given out for the winner of this challenge, and with that, you get a $50,000 scholarship for school. So the fact that we even have the governor of Delaware who's kind of backing us up, and we got some phone calls today from people from all over, who I don't know who they are, but they're willing to support us, and I think it's awesome that not even the town, but everybody is kind of backing us up, and I wouldn't have gotten where I have gotten without the support and the knowledge and the growth that I've gotten from this town and this community. So I just kind of wanted to share that with you all.
I can tell you, at least, we know, we know...
Oh, there's a survey. So this is just, because we had to make a mock website for this competition, and we kind of, just with a little bit of research, came up with this, but now that we actually want to make this happen, if you go on here, there's, once we get farther, we have to talk about, because there's like legal things with getting donations, since this isn't an actual thing yet, but once it comes up, it would be open. We have already fundraising. We wanted to work with local government as far as like local colleges. We have already, I've already talked to the admissions from Cecil College, and they were more than happy to jump on board if this happened, to, I mean, work with education with these kids, because it's really scary to think that a lot of foster parents, when their children age out, they get their last check, and the kids go out on the front doorstep. And it's a scary reality, but this is, the horrifying statistic is that if a child's not adopted by the age of eight, they probably will age out and be on the streets. So it's kind of our program is working with the community, because if we can keep people off the streets, get them educated, they can be standing citizens in this society. And it kind of just gives kids more of a hope that is starting to be lost in our community.
Very good. Thank you. I would say that our town is going to be in good hands many years to come. Mary Jo, you're still on.
I wanted to give Ally my time, and I just want to thank everyone for coming out.
Very good. Commissioner, you're on.
Yeah, I want to be mayor to this. Has anybody noticed the change in pattern on Delaware Avenue? It's open as of the day, there's stop signs. Just want to make sure everybody's aware of that. I came through here around 2:00, 3:00 o'clock, well, it was earlier than that, but I just want to make sure everyone knows that there's stop signs. I saw a couple people running right through it, the light's going, didn't look at the stop sign yet. But anyway, I just want to make that known. And also, you might have this on your list, I don't know if you have, I'm going to do a job tonight. The parking enforcement has taken place as of the day, Tuesday. So if no one's aware, downtown parking enforcement is in place. Did you know that, Mayor?
I did.
Which, did you ever know you did?
I didn't.
Okay. All right, just, I just want to let you know. All right, just, I just want to let you know that I looked at your notes, I didn't see it, so... So anyway, also, I would like to thank the FOP, the police department, and also Lodge 124, I think that's it. They're gonna help expand a program that's running through Cecil County Parks and Rec. I've been running a program for Cecil County Parks and Rec up at the Elton Middle School. Forty-two kids, you heard me talk about this. And the program ends as of next Tuesday. Taken upon myself to expand that program, because there's so many kids that want something. But basketball season usually ends up around the 1st of March, then you go into March Madness, and everybody knows all about that. So March Madness, to me, is extending it for the kids, another seven weeks. And the police are gonna be putting a team in and sponsoring the team. Cecil County Parks and Rec's gonna have a team. I understand basic basketball will have a team, maybe even two. But we're gonna create a league for the kids for the next seven weeks. I just want to say thank you, United, chief. Surprise, surprise. And also, if you ever get chance, between 3:30 and 5:30, this is gonna take place, we welcome you. We have to set up all these chairs around, because we don't have bleachers like some schools. One or two kids and myself set up all these chairs, and we take it down after the kids leave. I'm stuck with all this. But the best part about this, we made it available for the cheerleaders who have been practicing up at the Elton Middle School, because they don't do anything except for practice chairs. Now, in each one of these games, we can allow them that five or 10 minutes to do their chairs, and it was so appreciative. So I just want to thank for supporting that. And that's it.
Well, thank you. As Commissioner Van Ryn will state, I think most people are aware that we've had a hiccup in our water billing. And I feel pretty comfortable we're moving in the right direction. We're finally, as of yesterday, we're... Our key person, Beth Moran, made it back to work, so happy to have her back. We're gonna hope to get this little hiccup under our belt and move on. It's taught us a few things. You know, we've looked at, we're looking at other avenues of the billing and so forth, and I think it's gonna make us a better billing department when this is all done. The main thing is, it hasn't affected anyone's service in the town of Elton. We've made sure of that, and you know, we're moving forward to get through it, and made it hopefully very clear that no one should get, go through the second cycle with any errors on their billing, and let's hope that the folks that had some issues in December won't have those issues when it comes to March. So we're looking forward to that. The... I look in the audience, and I see two candidates that's running for, in the county again, Alan McCarthy for county executive and Bob Metley for county council. And I'm looking forward to seeing you guys after you're elected also. I appreciate you coming to our meeting, and it's very important to us to see you, because we've got a lot of things that we want to work with the county on as we move forward into, after the election year. So thank you all for coming. With that, I have nothing else to add, so we're gonna open up the floor for the public to say a few words, and I'd like to invite Mr. Ray Waters up first, if he had something that he needed to say. I know he had something to say, and I cut him off, but come on down.
I just wanted a better understanding of the variance that, for the alcohol, the open container, and I think part of the question should be if there's a limit on the space that's open. You mentioned that the Elton Alliance, so does that open it to all Elton Alliance members? Just looking for a little bit of clarification on that.
And I don't know. I will get those answered for you, though. I think there's a lot of questions I had after, after that comment, but...
And does that come from the liquor board?
I think most of it is gonna be determined by the liquor board, because I'm not sure if you can bring your license...
Has I heard some things that I don't think is pro-provoked for the liquor board?
But I can tell you, we'll look into that, and we'll have you some clarification.
That's all I have.
I will say that I think, from what I was hearing, through special events, that might play a part in it, not just a regular daily operation, a special event that you might host, and you might come to.
Yeah, my understanding is a special event, because we can do a special event and have it out in the parking lot as long as our landlord agrees.
Exactly.
Now, so that's the landlord. So if the town of Elton agrees, does that mean it opens it? But I think if you open that open container and you use Elton, you're talking about Elton, not downtown Elton.
Right. This is specific to the downtown area, what we did tonight, but if you were to go off premises, you have to get, and you don't quote me exactly on this, but you do have to get a certain special event license for catering to do the food and alcohol off premises.
You're allowed two a year, my understanding is, and it's 50 bucks a pop, so it's really not...
Right. It's not expensive, I do know that.
Yeah, just looking for clarification, and I know it's probably perceived as, oh, they want to be involved and be part of it. I don't know that I do, but it was just more about fact-finding on my part to know that, so... All right, that's it, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have anything to say this evening? Hearing none, seeing none, this meeting's adjourned.